I would like to call to order the City of Cherryville's Regular City Council Meeting of Monday, December 11, 2023. Before we have our invocation, I have one announcement I need to make, and that is concerning citizens to be heard. I know the citizens to be heard, you have a sign-up sheet, but when we get down to other business, we are going to have another open discussion, and I want all the people that are here to know that you will have a chance to speak after the city council brings some information before you under other business. It's not a line item, it would be the last, next to last thing before German, so you will be able to speak again on that subject. So at this time, I'm going to ask everyone to please stand for our invocation by Pastor Zach Christie, and followed by our Pledge of Allegiance.
Let us go to God in prayer. Good and gracious God, we give you so much thanks and praise, dear Lord, for the gift of this day, and Lord, for the gift of this wonderful community here in Cherryville. Lord, we give you thanks. Father, we pray that your hand would be upon each and every individual who makes up this wonderful town. Lord, we pray that you would be with our leaders, that you would give them wisdom, insight, and discernment. And Father, we pray that as we go forward, that we would learn to better love and serve our neighbors as we learn to better love and serve you, for it is in your holy name and in the name of your Son, Jesus Christ, we do pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated. The first item on our agenda tonight is to approve our agenda as presented. At this time, I would ask council for direction on approval of our agenda.
Make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Have a motion to approve the agenda as presented with two seconds. At this time, all in favor of this motion, please say aye.
Aye.
And all opposed, the same, and there is none. Next item would be approval of our minutes of A, our City Council Regular Meeting of November 13, 2023. What is the council's pleasure on approving our minutes?
Make a motion that we go ahead and approve the minutes as we read them for November 13.
Second.
Have a motion to approve the minutes as presented for our A, our City Council Regular Meeting of November 13, 2023. All in favor of this motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the same, and it is unanimous. Next item on our agenda is the mayor's comments, and I will be very brief tonight because we do have a lengthy agenda. Despite the rain, Whoville and the annual Christmas parade both were big successes for our city. Over 5,000 people were estimated to attend these two events. The downtown merchants were pleased with the events and the business that it produced. These events take a lot of planning and hard work by many different city departments and individuals as well. The city would like to acknowledge and thank Mary Beth Tackett and all her volunteers for all the tireless work in ensuring that these events were successful for our city and its citizens. Westgate Park now has a six-foot fencing installed at the pickleball courts. Eight-foot fencing for the basketball court will soon follow. The city plans for an official reopening of this park in the near future. The city has finished paying for the engineering costs for the new water line that will be installed on Highway 150. City engineer Raisel Wright and city manager Brian Dalton are pushing to get this project's bid out as soon as possible. This new water line is critical to completing the loop of our city water system to prevent dead ends. The future housing development on Reekway Road is now ready to start development. Equipment for this project has started to move on to the property, and along the same lines, the contractors for the apartments on East Academy have announced that grading and construction will begin on December 15 of this year. Finally, on behalf of the Cherryville City Council, our city staff, and all our city workers, we want to take this opportunity to wish all our citizens a very happy and safe holiday season, and please always remember the reason for the season, and that is the birth of our Savior, Jesus Christ. We will now move on to other business, and the first item is a special recognition, and at this time, I'm going to ask council member Malcolm Parker if he would come in front of the chambers. This is always one of the toughest things a mayor has to do, and that is to let somebody go that has been here so long, and I will try to keep it as brief as possible, Malcolm, and I hope I can get through this, but this guy has worked for us for the 12 years and has been very instrumental in what we have done as a city for the last 10 years. And so Malcolm, this is presented to Edward Malcolm Parker in recognition of dedicated service to the City of Cherryville and its citizens while serving as council member from 2011 to 2023, and is presented December 11, 2023. Congratulations, Malcolm. This is for you to keep also. You have the floor if there's anything you wish to say at this time.
I would like to thank the good Lord and the citizens of Cherryville for these last 12 years, and I would also like to thank the mayor, city council, Brian Dalton, and all of our city employees for the hard work and dedication they have put into this town in the last 12 years, and just wish everybody a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year.
Thank you, Father. Love you. Our next item on the agenda is our swearing-in ceremony, and at this time, I would like to have our District Court Judge Craig Collins, if he will come forward, and any members of Janice Hobus' family that would like to come forward for her swearing-in. And Janice, if you'd like to tell us who the members of your family are, we're going to get them recognized just as well, and we'll get a photo op, too.
Okay, this is my granddaughter, Mary Beth Wyatt. She's going to hold the Bible for me. Today is her 24th birthday. My best friend, too. I love my Mary Beth, yes. This is my daughter Julie Lyles and my son David Hobus, and my son-in-law Tracy Lyles, and is anybody else? Okay, all right, that's it for right now.
I would ask everyone, please stand.
I'm so sorry.
Everyone, please stand.
She has to make a couple of comments.
Okay, sure.
So Janice has to make just a couple of quick comments before we get started. As a judge, it's a great honor that people ask us to come out and do these. I think that the oath of office is the true symbol of our political spirit in this nation, of peaceful transfer of power, of peaceful handing of the baton when someone leaves office, and just the true greatness and wisdom of our founders. And so it's always an honor to get to come to Cherryville and do it is also a great honor, where I have so many friends, the mayor, who's been such a strong friend of mine. Paige, thank you so much for always showing me that court system. We have a great community hearing guest in Cherryville, and throughout guest camp, it's great to have, to hear the mayor talk about the reason for Christmas, to have a city council that's proud to have, in God we trust, here across the front, and to have a city council government that understands where our powers, where their powers come from, and what the limitations are, and who actually endowed us with the rights that we have. So that's a great privilege, but on a personal note, that's kind of some of my thought of this as a whole, but when Janice Hobus asked me to do the oath today, it's a great honor. I've known her husband Ron for many years. We have Senator Oerkach in the back. Senator Brad Oerkach and I got to serve with Ron on the Gas College Board of Trustees, and we say we have a great community college, and Ron is one of the big reasons for that. He was instrumental in every major initiative that we did, and it was a great privilege to get to serve with him. So we're here in honor of his service as well, and I made the comment earlier, he would be so proud of his wife right now and wondering what she's thinking at the same time. So I hope that you'll join me in ongoing prayers for Janice Hobus, along with the rest of the city council, the mayor, to continue the great work that this leadership has done, and to give them the wisdom to know what to do, but I just want to make the comment of how much of an honor it is to get to stand here with someone that I have great respect for, along with your entire family, and every time I meet you or met Ron, I found new family members of yours that I've been friends with for a long time. So it really is a privilege, so thank you. Are you ready to receive the oath?
Sure am.
Okay, you will, you guys can position yourselves where you're around, but if you will put your left hand on the Bible, raise your right, and you'll repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Janice Hobus.
Do solemnly and sincerely swear.
Do solemnly and sincerely swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
And the laws of the United States.
And the laws of the United States.
That I will be faithful and bear true allegiance.
That I will be faithful and bear true allegiance.
To the state of North Carolina.
To the state of North Carolina.
And to the constitutional powers and authorities.
And to the constitutional powers and authorities.
Which are or may be established.
Which are or may be established.
For the government thereof.
For the government thereof.
That I will endeavor to support.
That I will endeavor to support.
Maintain and defend.
Maintain and defend.
The Constitution and laws of the state.
The Constitution and laws of the state.
Not inconsistent with the Constitution of the United States.
Not inconsistent with the Constitution of the United States.
To the best of my knowledge and ability.
To the best of my knowledge and ability.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of my office as council member.
The duties of my office as council member.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
I am so honored to have you here with us, and thank you.
Thank you.
Council member Hobus, if you will take your seat now.
Yeah, Judge.
Yes, ma'am.
He wants to get another picture with just.
Oh, who'll get one by himself and one with the family?
Yeah, just us. Okay, one with family. Our judge is going to stay up here with the family. Okay, it's for the paper.
You may be seated. We're not finished, we've got a couple more here that we're going to swear in tonight, and at this time, I'm going to ask council member John Abernathy if he will come forward with any family members that he has here tonight in front of the podium. And we have municipal city clerk, North Carolina Municipal City Clerk Paige Hallman, who will do the installation for us. And at this time, I'm going to ask everyone to stand again.
I, John Abernathy.
I, John Abernathy.
Do solemnly and sincerely swear.
Do solemnly and sincerely swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
And laws of the United States.
And laws of the United States.
And I will be faithful and bear true allegiance.
And I will be faithful and bear true allegiance.
To the state of North Carolina.
To the state of North Carolina.
And to the constitutional powers and authorities.
And to the constitutional powers and authorities.
Which are or may be established for the government thereof.
Which are or may be established for the government thereof.
That I will endeavor to support.
That I will endeavor to support.
Maintain and defend.
Maintain and defend.
The Constitution and laws of said state.
The Constitution and laws of said state.
Not inconsistent with the Constitution of the United States.
Not inconsistent with the Constitution of the United States.
To the best of my knowledge and ability.
To the best of my knowledge and ability.
That I will faithfully discharge.
I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of my office.
The duties of my office.
As council member.
As council member.
So help me God.
So help me God.
I feel like I'm in church or something like that, but you may be seated. We do have one more to swear in at this time, and I will come forward and ask our North Carolina Certified Municipal Clerk and my family members that would like to come forward. I have my grandson here, Harrison Walker, my oldest daughter, oldest daughter, Angela Walker, and my youngest daughter, Ashley Long, and they're going to hold the Bible. Who's going to hold the Bible?
Well, Harry can hold it.
Harry's going to hold the Bible, okay.
I, Henry.
Everybody, please stand up. Sorry.
I, Henry Lee Dean III.
I, Henry Lee Dean III.
Do solemnly and sincerely swear.
Do solemnly and sincerely swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
And laws of the United States.
And laws of the United States.
That I will be faithful and bear true allegiance.
That I will be faithful and bear true allegiance.
To the state of North Carolina.
To the state of North Carolina.
And to the constitutional powers and authorities.
And to the constitutional powers and authorities.
Which are or may be established for the government thereof.
Which are or may be established for the government thereof.
That I will endeavor to support.
That I will endeavor to support.
Maintain and defend.
Maintain and defend.
The Constitution and laws of said state.
The Constitution and laws of said state.
Not inconsistent with the Constitution of the United States.
Not inconsistent with the Constitution of the United States.
To the best of my knowledge and ability.
To the best of my knowledge and ability.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of my office.
The duties of my office.
Jill, and John, and Gary, and Mayor Bean, and Mr. Dalton, our city manager, Mr. Dalton. Everybody sitting up here, I am sure, wants the best for our city. But, I would like to add one last thing. We're not gonna agree on everything. We will not agree on everything. And we have had a couple issues over the past couple years that have divided, divided the town. And I've attended a couple city council meetings prior to filing for election, and maybe one after I filed for election. I would just like to say, we must strive, we must strive, even though we disagree, we must strive to communicate with each other and to communicate with the citizens of Cherryville in a respectful manner and with kindness. Thank you very much. Everybody have a Merry Christmas.
We'll move on to Councilman, uh, John Abernathy. You have any comments at this time?
Yeah, I, I think we've done a lot of, a lot of good things in the last four years. Um, I think our town is heading in a wonderful direction. Um, I'm looking forward to the next four years, and I think it's only gonna get better from here. So, thank you, citizens of Cherryville, for giving me four more years.
And that does bring us to my comments. You know what you get with me. I've been here ten years, I'm gonna be here for at least two more years, and I do promise you this, there will not be any decisions I make that I do not think is for, not personal, but for the best for our city and its citizens. I love everybody in this town. I've been here for seventy-nine years, I've been on business on Main Street for over sixty years, so I love this town, and I will strive to keep it, uh, as positive as I can, and I hope that I can govern with wisdom in my mind and Christianity in my heart for the citizens of Cherryville. Thank you. We'll move on now to consideration of the presentation in regards to our 2022-23 audit, and we have Mrs. Sheila Thornton of CPA Managing Partner with Butler &amp; Stowe. You have the floor now, if you would like to come to the podium.
Thank you for having me tonight. I just wanna let you know that I presented a copy of the audit to the council members. Um, it's about an eighty-five page report, so I'm just gonna hit a couple highlights for you guys, make sure you know the important parts. Um, we began the audit in September, and we finished the paperwork in early October. We were able to issue, um, the, submit the report to the LGC by the, the October thirty-first deadline, and they approved it in November, so you guys are, uh, good with your deadlines for the year. Um, there were no, um, financial performance indicators of concern. If you had any of those, we would've had to let you know at this meeting that there were some concerns that needed to be addressed. We don't have any of those this year. Uh, so you don't have to do anything else as far as the LGC is concerned until next year. Um, but, uh, we did perform a single audit. You guys had spent in excess of seven hundred fifty thousand dollars in federal funds, and that's the ARPA monies, the American Rescue Plan monies, so it did require a single audit, uh, so there were some additional procedures performed this year. Um, all of that went well, we didn't find any kind of discrepancies or anything, so we found the books to be in very good order. Um, and we're given all the information when we asked for it, so everything just in good order. Uh, so our opinion on the audit is that it's an unqualified opinion, that means that it's a clean opinion. Um, we didn't have any kind of discrepancies that we would need to note, um, and talk about tonight. Uh, that is what you want, you want a clean opinion when you're doing an audit, okay? So, everything went well. So, um, so you have met the audit requirements of the North Carolina General Statutes, and we believe these financial statements represent the financial status of the city at June thirty, twenty twenty-three. Um, I'll just point out a couple of the highlights, and these mostly can be found on pages two through eleven, that's a summary of everything. Uh, the city ended the year with combined assets exceeding your liabilities by twenty-three million four thirty-nine, four sixteen. Um, and that's an increase over the prior year of over six hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars. Uh, so a good, healthy financial, uh, condition at June thirty. Uh, the unassigned fund balance of the general fund was two million four nineteen, seven forty-seven at June thirty. And that amount represents funds that are unrestricted, and they are available to the council, um, without any kind of restriction, so that's good, that's a good number there. Um, and then I just wanted to point out the two enterprise funds, your electric and your water and sewer, you guys had a combined income of four hundred and twenty-one thousand zero eighty-nine for the year ending June thirty, twenty twenty-three. Um, so overall, you know, you have increases in the fund balance from twenty twenty-two and twenty twenty-three, um, so I feel like you had a good, healthy year as far as your finances are concerned. Um, in the back, you will see the compliance part of the audit, and that is a requirement of the LGC to present the federal monies that were received. Um, I believe that's on page eighty-one. Uh, you'll see that, that's the American Rescue Plan money that were received, you received nine hundred sixty-seven thousand six twenty-two, uh, and, and those were spent during the year. So I just wanted to point that out, since that's a compliance, and make sure you guys knew that's in the back of the year. Um, any kind of questions that I can answer for you guys, or?
Uh, the only comment I would make, I'm, I'm looking on page two, and that is, uh, the percent of our fund balance is now, is that correct, thirty-one point two percent?
That, that means that you have in fund balance, uh, you have thirty-one point two percent of the general fund expenditures for the fiscal year already in the bank. Okay, so that's a good healthy percentage.
City manager, uh, is that the highest we've ever had?
It's definitely the highest I know of.
Okay. I remember when they were giving us that in, in point, uh, percentage, and now we're at thirty-one point two, which I know that makes the state happy also.
It does, it does.
So, okay. Does any council member have any questions for Mrs. Thornton?
No, it's always wonderful to hear we have a healthy. It is.
I don't, I don't at this time, but I may, I may.
I just wanna thank Dixie and Brian for putting together everything they needed for this good audit.
Yes, sir.
Thank y'all.
Ditto. And I know you work a lot, only because I see you at City Hall many, many days.
Thank you.
Uh, working back there in the back office, uh, comforts room by yourself a lot of times, and I know Dixie's right with you to answer any questions you have, and, and Brian also.
Yeah, I wanna thank Ryan and Dixie, though, they've been there very, very helpful in getting the process, uh, to go very smoothly.
And, and we're extremely happy with Butler &amp; Stowe.
Thank you, I appreciate the opportunity to be of service, and if we can help you any way, just let us know.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on. Out of ten is citizens to be heard. Uh, any citizen that would like to speak may do so by coming to the podium, stating your name and address, and comments will be strictly held to five minutes per person. So at this time, do I have, uh, any citizens? I have two that have signed up, and I, in order that I received, and I will call them forward. The first one is Sid Strapp, uh, if you'd come forward.
Yeah, good evening, I'm Sid Strapp, and I live at two oh seven, uh, West Academy Street. I was just wanting to, to get a real quick update on the, what we call the Cherry Tree Project for two thousand, uh, twenty twenty-three. Uh, I'd like to say that it was, uh, we completed the planning, there were one hundred trees, uh, my, the majority of them that did go to the city cemetery, which is where we had identified that it would really spruce the area to have those out there. Um, and then we also targeted some other areas. Have you all seen some of these things around town? Uh, the goal of our little group here is that we really love the cherry trees, right? And we wanna make Cherryville, I mean, this, we'd like to refer to in the future as the, um, Jefferson Memorial of the South. That's gonna be on that, as we move into the years forward. Um, you know, I lived away from here for quite a while, and people would say, "Oh, we refer to Cherryville, oh, I think you have just cherry trees everywhere." And I would say, "Well, we do have some, but we could use more." And so I really appreciate the council and everyone's support as we got this together. Just real briefly, we did have one benefactor that contributed the funds to, to do the total planning, and we're really thankful to him, it's John B. Towler from Raisfield Beach. He's a Cherryville native, he and his wife, Judy Blackweller Towler, uh, wanted to do this. Now, I will admit, this is a secret for, um, Judy. Uh, Judy, uh, John wants to, 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 to let her know about this planting of cherry trees on Christmas Day, and he's doing this in honor of what they call the Cherryville Cherries. This was a group of about eight or ten that graduated in the CHS class of nineteen fifty-seven, and he wanted to do it in honor of them. You know, every year for the last, I think I've counted sixty-something years, they would get together and come to Cherryville, they loved to get together here and revisit their families and friends and that sort of thing. So, uh, it's a secret, if you, if anybody happens to talk to somebody, or Judy, or Judy in particular, don't let her know that this has happened, but she, um, she'll be aware to, um, Christmas Day. And, um, and I will follow up, just to say, I wanna thank my sister Carol. Um, Carol and I went around several months ago, and we did a complete inventory, and this is everything all over town, of every cherry tree that we have planted today. So we have, you know, a plan that we would like to continue this, like we said, next year, and in the next, um, to target those areas that would really give us some good harvestability of these beautiful cherry trees in the spring. Um, I think that's it. If you have any questions, I'll take them, but, um, I would like people's help. If you see that we need to staple it up here and there, if it looks dry next summer, please let us know, because we're gonna make sure that these things survive and that, uh, Mr. Towler's investment is here to stay, okay?
Okay, the comment I would have, I got, I got a guided tour of the cherry trees by city manager as recently as today. So, uh, we were riding all over town. My one question would be, and he would point out to me, the new ones are the one that have the mulch around.
That's right.
And that's, that's how you know the new ones from the old ones. But did, did y'all also do work on some of the old ones? Because I noticed a lot of them have been trimmed.
They've been trimmed. That's been our goal, was to go back, you know, Mr. Barker gave, I guess, a lot of them in the previous years where they were planted, but they just haven't been trimmed as they should. I think now, when you see them, they'll, they'll have a semi-trimmed trunk, and they will start growing up and out, and that's where the flowers will really, um, take off. So, yes, we've gone around town, we still have a few more places, I think, around City Hall to do some trimming, but this is our goal to, um, make Cherryville, like I said, the, uh, Jefferson Memorial.
Jefferson Memorial.
So with that, thank you all.
Thank you.
Is any other council members have any questions?
Great job, showing you. Did you do the actual planting?
Yes, uh, that was done by, um, David Wise Landscaping.
Okay.
We bought the trees directly from the, uh, grower in McMinnville, Tennessee.
They look beautiful.
Yeah, and they're really quality plants. He drove them all the way from Tennessee one morning and left them with David, David picked them up, and then we, we actually got them all in the ground in one day. I mean, it was sort of a process that we used to dig, dig, plant, mulch, and move on.
Okay. I'll be getting in touch with you in January for another little project.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we have another individual that has, uh, signed up to speak. If you would come to the podium, state your name and address, and remember, comments will be held to five minutes.
Good evening, my name is Arthur Rubllo, and I live at, uh, five thirty-two Cockdillinger Road. And, um, I'm just here to note that, um, I had a water leak in front of my property, I'm not connected to the city water, I use well water, but I had this new pond drawn in my front yard, and it turns out it was city water that was leaking into the property. And, uh, when I called the city water department, they came over, and the gentlemen's, or the men and the women, they came over and helped me figure out where it was leaking from. I determined that it was city water, and we got it fixed, and it got done within a couple, within a week or so. And I just wanted to thank them for those work that they did, and the water that they may have saved after we turned it off, because it'd been running since May. We decided, uh, a week, a week ago, maybe two weeks ago. So, I would suggest that maybe the water department invest in a water monitoring system? And, thank you very much. I did, uh, email, uh, the mayor, city manager, and a few other people, but I never heard anything back, so that's why.
Yeah. I, I sent you a, uh, Mr. Rubllo, I did. And did you not, uh, also give me a phone call? Or someone did about the same thing that was going on?
I did.
And I called back on that, and it went to voicemail, so I wasn't sure I had the right number. But I see your number is three zero three eight nine eight, and that doesn't sound like the same number, but anyway, thank you so much for your concern.
Yeah, um, I lost it when I tried to talk. Thank you all.
Okay, thank you for coming. Okay, is there any other citizen that would like to be heard at this time? And as I mentioned at the first of our meeting, you will have another chance to comment later on in our meeting. So we'll move on now to item eleven, and this is consideration of, uh, vehicles for hire. And this is regarding a permit that the city has, or, planning and zoning has received for the city, uh, on a taxi service. And our city manager, Brian Dalton, will lead us through that. It's pages twelve through fourteen in your agenda packet.
Yes, Mayor, Council, uh, we were approached by Mr. Bombadere a few weeks ago about a, uh, potential taxi service here in town. Uh, obviously, we've not had one of those, to my knowledge, in my lifetime. I think at some point, we used to have one. But our ordinances lay out what you have to do to, to get a permit in order to operate a taxi cab service. Uh, now, some of this is a little outdated, obviously, with the, with the coming of Uber...
And I'm just here to note that I had a water leak in front of my property. I'm not connected to the city water. I use well water. But I had this new pond drawn in my front yard. And it turns out it was city water that was leaking into the property. And when I called the city water department, they came over and the gentlemen, or the men and the women, they came over and helped me figure out where it was leaking from. I determined that it was city water and we got it fixed and it got done within a week or so. And I just wanted to thank them for those work that they did and the water that they may have saved after we turned it off because it'd been running since May. We decided a week ago, maybe two weeks ago. So I would suggest that maybe the water department invest in a water monitoring system. Thank you very much. I did email the mayor, city manager and a few other people, but I never heard anything back, so that's why.
Yeah. I sent you, Mr. Rubllo, I did. And did you not also give me a phone call? Or someone did about the same thing that was going on. And I called back on that and it went to voicemail. So I wasn't sure I had the right number. But I see your number is 303898 and that doesn't sound like the same number. But anyway, thank you so much for your concern.
Yeah, I lost it when I tried to talk.
Okay, thank you for coming. Okay, is there any other citizen that would like to be heard at this time? And as I mentioned at the first of our meeting, you will have another chance to comment later on in our meeting. So we'll move on now to item 11. And this is consideration of vehicles for hire. And this is regarding a permit that the city has, or Plamen and Zonlin has received for the city on a taxi service. And our city manager, Brian Dalton, will lead us through that. It's pages 12 through 14 in your agenda packet.
Yes, Mayor, Council, we were approached by Mr. Bombadere a few weeks ago about a potential taxi service here in town. Obviously, we've not had one of those, to my knowledge, in my lifetime. I think at some point we used to have one. But our ordinances lay out what you have to do to get a permit in order to operate a taxi cab service. Now, some of this is a little outdated, obviously, with the coming of Uber and things like that. But as far as our ordinance goes, the permit has to be issued by the city council. And if you look there on page 12 and going through page 14, it has all the rules and what has to be met. And specifically, page 13, 1 through 8 is the issues that you look at as far as determining if you would issue this permit. So if you would decide to issue the permit, at that point, the police chief then is responsible for making sure that the taxi cab service has certain markings on the cars so that it's known what they're doing, who they are. And the other thing is they have to do criminal background checks to make sure nobody's been convicted of any certain felonies or anything like that to operate the taxi cab service. And Mr. Bombadere.
That is what we look at.
Yep. And I think he'd been working with Mr. Lael here in town maybe about
Hey, do me.
some decals for identification purposes. And like I said, from that point forward, if you would issue the permit, then like I said, it's on the police chief to make sure that he follows all the rules, you know, the proper insurance, the criminal background checks and all of that. And I think you said four cars? Is that what you?
I'm sorry. My name is Donald Bombadere of 124 Oakley Lane, Cherryville.
Yes, sir.
I want to thank you guys for letting me speak first of all. I know you have an taxi service here. This is the 60s or whatever the case is. I know we were joking around about. Thank you for letting me speak.
You'll come here. There's a microphone.
So, yeah, the chief, Speaker Brian has been very helpful, Jim and the chief. I also want to let you know that I've spoken to, I went to all the schools, my grandchildren build the schools here. I've spoken to the principals and the teachers. They want this so bad because a lot of the students get sick. Oh, I can't pick up my kid. Too bad leaving there for the day, right? They keep getting too, as you know, there's not a lot of Uber or Lyft or anything else. I went to the local hospitals. I went to Lincoln City. I went to Shelby. I have, like I said, the schools, local businesses, spoken to many people. I think we need it. Ever since COVID, a lot of people moved out. They were sick. They couldn't even shop. Thank God we got past that. But at this point, I think accessibility is the most important thing and dependability. You know, getting from point A to point B, getting people home safe. Now, is it a risk? I don't know. Every business is a risk, but I'm here in Cherryville three years, I own multiple companies and I plan on opening up a couple more in Cherryville. So my companies don't, are not here. They're in Charlotte and some other places. But I plan on being more involved in the community. I think this is good for everybody, good for the parents, good for the schools, and they really, really need them. And, you know, we got possibly Lithia mine. We have a sports bar coming in. We have a steakhouse coming in. We have, people are going to drink. There's no, there's no, call us. We'll get your home safe. Why take the risk and put more pressure on the police department or anybody else, fire department, DWIs? It's not worth it. We don't want that here. So if you allow me to do this, I run legitimate businesses. I've never been sued. I just won the 2023 Service Award for the Best Business in North Carolina for my fence company and my construction company, my landscaping company, you know, good workers. I'm not going to have young kids behind the wheel. I don't need cowboys behind the wheel running around cabs all the time driving the police crazy. So now the gentleman, Mr., the gentleman who was up here that you replaced, I'm sorry, Parker, he asked to come work for me. I said, absolutely. He knows everybody in town. He knows. I mean, he's a nice guy, you know, he's poor. So I'm not going to have young kids. You know, people who know the community already and know the people, I'm not going to put anybody at risk. I will have cameras in tow. I'm not going to put anybody at risk. And I think it'd be a service to the community and other communities because we got a lot of things in the pipeline eventually coming here, right? So, you know, if you guys allow me to do this. Yeah, I'm well aware of that. I might be involved in that also with my construction company, my landscaping company. I've been in emails on that, on that. And I don't have a phone number on the ad, not to you proving me. And I'm going to start with these two camps. Okay, two. I don't know what the time limit would be, but I will have them out from, I've already had 40 phone calls from residents in town that do travel a lot, that go to Charlotte Airport and things like that. They can't get lift. They can't get Uber, Tommy. Absolutely. If they approve it, I'll take, you know, the schools. And it'll also be accessibility. I'm trying to figure out accessibility. I'll have a separate one possibly for wheelchairs. Okay, and I'm starting a medical transport company, but that's through the state, obviously. But I'm going to have something for ADA accessibility. So, and for pets, you know, a lot of people can't, need to rush their pet to the vet. I'm not going to deny it. I would never do that. Not because of the service dog, because I'm a pet lover. You know, it's, I think we need this in town. So if you guys allow this, averting one of the bylaws and what it would be, four inch lettering, anything, the background checks with the chief. I've already spoken to them about. He'll handle that. They'll have to go to the courthouse, get the background checks and then go to a man. I can have tell none of that stuff.
I just had a situation and it was last week. And my first cousin called me. She has a child at East Elementary. The bus driver was out. They did not have a backup.
They didn't have a backup, yeah.
So she and her husband both worked. So the call was made to her cell phone. Come and get your child. And she said, automatically that put me out. What am I supposed to do? Do I jeopardize leaving my job? Do I call my husband and he doing the same? So actually, she wound up calling my sister and was able to get her to go pick the child up. But that would have been a perfect example.
My wife had to pick up, took our two grandkids and then picked up four more. They said, no, I got a lot of trucks in my construction. And they said, can you stop by and pick us up? She made two trips and her car gets seven passenger. She has a Kia Sport, all right? So and she goes, you got the camp company up? Everybody recalled. I said, well, yeah, but I know all about that. So and they're late sometimes. They don't show for half an hour, whatever the case is. You know, returners, obviously, drugstores, everything that needs to be done, people, you know, seniors get the medications. Whenever you need, you know, Walmart, I went to Walmart, they're all for it. Because these people stand outside hours waiting to get picked up and it just, you know, it's a lot of stuff. So they like to get them in and get them out.
Senate council members, I'm sure you want not only discussion, but you probably want us to take action on this if all possible tonight. My only concern would be that the police chief, do you have any problems at all with the service?
I have spoken with Mr. Bombadere on numerous occasions. We went over the guidelines. I'm okay with doing what is requested in the city.
Eight points here that we have on page 13, okay? City manager Dalton, what would your recommendation be that we approve this?
Yes, Mayor, I have no problems with it. And I just want to point out too, on page 13, you know, they have to have an initial inspection to get started, but that doesn't end there. Every six months, he has to bring, like, he mentioned two cars. He has to bring those two cars back. If you look at section B there, he has to bring those two cars back and they get inspected again. So it's every six months. So it's not like you just, you approve it and it just keeps continuing. They have to maintain that inspection.
And council members.
Brian, the preliminary requirements here, I guess that starts on page 12.
Okay. Yes.
Has all, do we need any kind of action before it goes to the police chief? Or have you checked everything that has to be done before you turn it over to the police chief? Has he complied with?
I have to get the background checks.
The preliminaries.
Yeah, from the Gaston County Courthouse. My cars, as you see from here, have to get inspected regularly, okay? Then they go through another inspection through the chief with the four inch lettering, this, everything else, up to safety standards. And they'll already have the pre-inspection. As for the background checks and that, that goes through the courthouse over there. They get their copy. They go to the chief. He does his little talk. He wants to talk to, you know, whatever his thing is. Boom, they get a temporary taxi permit. And then within 30 days, they'll get a regular one, which buys the chief some time to fully go through everything that needs to be done. Now, we're just setting the, nobody else has care companies in the other counties. They've all contacted me already. That's what all the chief police, they're all very interested in this due to, but like you said, we're going to set the standard here in Cherryville.
Okay, all right. Well, I just wanted to make sure everything was in order before we issue a license.
Once you give.
I think, yeah, I think if we issue it and then one of these things falls through, then he doesn't get it.
Yes.
Exactly.
Then the chief says, okay, it's done.
Well, you're issuing the permit.
The permit.
You're issuing the permit for him to start the process. But once he starts the process and goes through the chief of police and does all these requirements and proves all this, at that point, he's.
We're just issuing the permit. Thanks very much. Thank you, thank you.
So you issue the permit and then I'm able to get a cab and then I got to get with the chief and then get those inspections and I'm off the line.
Yep.
And the background checks. Thank you very much. I really appreciate this and I look forward to, you know, and, you know, every six months too, like you said, per inspection. If there's something that we need to go over, say there's a floor or something, we could adjust it every six months, right? We can say, hey, we did this, you know, we're going to be the guinea pigs. We can check it out, right? So, all right, so thank you very much and I look forward to doing business with everybody. I'm going to leave my business cards in the back there. If anybody needs to get ahold of me or questions or, I look forward to hearing from you guys. Thanks again. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Council, have any other discussions? So you want to take any action?
I make a motion to approve the permit.
Cody Housen from Tent Daddies, who's the owner in town of Tent Daddies, will be doing all the decal. He's done much of the decal.
Oh, okay. Yeah, it looks good. Looks good. Okay.
Appreciate y'all.
All right, I make a motion to issue the permit for a taxi service.
I have a motion in a second to issue a permit regarding a taxi service for the city of Cherryville. Any other discussion at this time? If not, all in favor of this motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the same. It is unanimous. Okay.
Thank you.
Got your permits. All right, next item is consideration of proposed bids on the new gymnasium. And if you'll go to page 15 through 30 on your laptops. And our city manager, Brian Dalton, will lead us through this. It's been a lot of discussion on the gym and we're finally getting to the process where we've got to choose who's going to build it for us.
Yes, Mayor, Council, as you know, we've been talking about this for several months now. We've actually already entered into an interlocal agreement with Gaston County where they are going to provide $1.5 million towards this project. We put this out for bid after getting the engineered plans. At first, we had, at a pre-bid meeting, we had eight contractors show up for the pre-bid meeting. But as the, as the project kept going and it got closer to time to bid, a lot of the smaller contractors started dropping off. So we were left with two large contractors that were going to bid. So we had to really re-advertise because we did not get three bids at the time that they were due originally. So we re-advertised at that point and when bids were due at this time, we received two bids. One from Quinn Sales, which most of you probably know as Custom Builders. Custom Builders built Caramont Urgent Care here in town just this past year or two. The other individual that bid or the company that bid was Bean Construction. Quinn Sales came in at the low bid of $1,643,363. So at this time, I am requesting that they be awarded the contract to bid the gymnasium.
For information purposes only, can you tell us what the other bid was?
Yes, it is public record. If you go down to.
That's going to be page 26.
Yes, page 26, Bean Construction bid, $1,864,000. And that comes to a difference of $220,637.
Any council members have any question for city manager Dalton on the two bids?
Where's Quinn Sales out of?
They're out of Gastonia. Like I said, they built the Caramont Urgent Care and one of their project managers is Keith Gardo and then Dustin Millwood also works from a local.
But the recommendation from our city manager is to accept the first bid, which was $200,000 or 200 some.
220,000.
220,000, okay.
And if you look also on the bids, Quinn Sales has proposed 200 calendar days once they start completing.
They put any contingencies that could increase the amount.
Well, as far as the price, now that would be up to us if we have change orders. But as far as what exactly is bid out, you know, the 8,800 square foot gymnasium with the hardwood floors and, you know, if we do it exactly how it's bid and do the parking lot exactly how the site plans turned out and we don't hit any problems, then no, that is what the price would be.
Mayor, if you're ready for a motion, I'll make the motion.
Okay, yeah. Any other discussion? If not, what's the pleasure of council?
I make a motion to award the bid to Quinn Sales Incorporated for $1,643,363. I'll second it.
Can I have a motion and a second to award the bid process to Quinn Sales out of Gastonia? Any other discussion? If not, all in favor of this motion, please do so by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the same. It is unanimous. Okay. And you might want to mention, didn't Quinn Sales say they could build it in 200 days?
That's what they got. Exactly. That's what's on their bid, 200 calendar days. Now, of course, that, depending on weather, you know.
When can they start?
Well, we'll get a contract, we'll get a contract. Obviously.
One question, I'm sorry. I'm so sorry. The $143,363, where are we going to get that money?
That is going to come from our community development agreement with Piedmont Lithia. And we're going to move $150,000 from it, from the first $500,000 that we received from them. We're going to move that $150,000 to cover the remaining balance of the gym.
Thank you, Brian.
That is one of the possibilities, but there's also, it may be open that we could go back to the county. If it starts getting higher and higher, we can go back to the county commissioners. And, well, they were actually looking at the first location, right, close to 2 million to build that soccer field beside East School. So I think they shorted us a little bit there to start with. So I think that's viable, that we could go back to them if it just starts ballooning up higher and higher.
And like I said, that's what shouldn't happen. That's why we bid it the way we did. We have, you know, for an example is the roof. You know, the engineered plans came with a screw-down roof and every contractor that I talked to said the same thing. You don't want that type of roof. You're going to want a standard seam roof. So we changed that. So we went to a higher roof. So all of that is bid into this project. So unless we do something on our end to change it, it should come in at where it's at.
Good running problems when they start grading because there've been some water lines and sewer lines, old ones found in that area.
You know, there's some things that, yes, you're correct, Mr. Freeman. We don't know what's going to happen when they start and what's underneath the ground. We don't know for sure.
Okay. All right, we'll move on to item 13, which is consideration of the water agreement with Lincoln County. Again, our city manager will lead us through that. And if you will jump to page 31, that's where the agreement begins. And city manager, you have four.
Mayor, city council, the mayor and I actually met with Mayor Hatley and city manager Haynes with Lincoln about our agreement with the city of Lincoln on our interconnect. I'm going to say this interconnect has probably been in since, what, early 2000s maybe? When we had a serious drought back in the early 2000s. But we've always been charged $3.05 per 1,000 gallons when we would purchase water from the city of Lincoln. So we negotiated this contract to change that to $1.50 per 1,000 gallons. That's going to be a huge savings to us. That's gonna be a huge savings to us, of course. So if you look on page thirty-one there, under number one, about middle way down, you'll see there, that's the price of a dollar fifty per thousand gallons, but we can get up to one point two million gallons per day from the city of Lincoln. And, let me see, the other.
So all those changes that we've worked on and talked about have been done, right?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
That's the main thing.
What we took out was the minimum purchase, that was the big thing, and the other thing is, that's right, city of Lincoln had their council meeting last Thursday and they approved this new agreement and there was one thing that they changed. If you'll go to page thirty-three, under number six, the only thing they changed and what this is, is the eighteen hundred dollars that we talked about in electric costs that they have on a given year, because it's three-phase down there at the pump station, if we would end up not turning the interconnect on at all and never turn it on, there's eighteen hundred dollars that, well, there's actually three hundred dollars a month to thirty-six hundred dollars, so we've agreed to split that price. So the only thing that they changed on that, though, is under, instead of the word remaining, it's, it's gonna be the different, the difference in balance will be paid to Lincoln within forty-five days. So what I'm saying is, is if we buy, which we're always gonna buy more than nine hundred dollars worth of water, or eighteen hundred dollars if we turn it on, but if we buy nine hundred dollars worth of water, then we owe nine hundred dollars at the end of the year, not eighteen hundred. But I feel like we're probably gonna be buying some water at some point, I mean, and it's worth it for us just to turn it on, no matter what, to, to purchase that amount. And this would go into effect immediately and actually it's gonna revert back to a bill that we had several months ago and he's gonna change the rate from three dollars and five cents per thousand back to the dollar fifty, which is gonna save us about forty thousand dollars in a bill.
So we did get a win-win on that.
It's a win-win. The only thing that I would point out, I don't see us or the city of Lincoln ever wanting to, to cancel this contract, I really don't. This is a ten-year contract, so when we, when we, if we enter into this contract, it's, it's valid for ten years. If you choose to, if you ever choose to cancel the contract, you gotta give five years notification. And the reason for that is, let's say, Lincoln buys a pump that they have to use to get the water to us, well, if they've got that money invested in buying that pump, they don't want us to be able to cancel this contract in six months. So it's a five, you gotta give them notice, if you look there, if you know, if we wanna cancel it January one, twenty thirty-four, we need to tell them January one, twenty, twenty-nine. So, and if you see the chart there and it just goes forth from there. But I believe it's a great deal for the city of Cherryville, for sure.
What it comes down to is they're competing with Cleveland County to try and get Piedmont Lethy water.
I wasn't gonna say it, but there you go. Yeah, they would love to be able to sell us a lot of water.
And they're gonna get that interconnect with Cleveland too, so.
But I think that will force us into negotiating with Cleveland County. I mean, we can always say we just opt for that and this is what they offered us, so we surely not gonna pay you more.
The interconnect that Cleveland County is doing with us right now, they're proposing a two dollar and nine cent per thousand, where obviously, we're gonna get this one for a dollar fifty, so you would turn this one on first.
So we have to give them so many days' notice before we turn the valve on?
No, ma'am. Well, we let them know, but no, if we, if we would need to go turn it on right now, we just, we just have to call them and say, hey, we're gonna have to go turn the interconnect on and we go down on highway one fifty right there in Kraus, we turn it on and go from there.
Okay, alright.
Okay, any other discussion by council? If not, do I have a motion to approve this water agreement with Lincoln County as presented?
Make a motion, we approve it with Lincoln County, water agreement of a dollar fifty per thousand.
I'll second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to accept the water agreement with Lincoln County as presented by city manager Brian Dalton. Any other discussion? If not, all in favor of this motion, do so by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the same. And there is none. Okay, we will move on now to item fourteen and this is consideration to set a public hearing and this is in regards to rezoning tariffs estates. And we have our planning and zoning director, Richard Eland, that's here and he will lead us through that.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I gave you six pages, what I'm requesting is a public hearing for January the eighth. The applicants, William Deborah Heffner, applied on October the thirty-first for their property's thirty-three acres, West Blackrock School Road, to be rezoned from R twelve versus single-family residential to a cluster development, which is zoned as CZR nine. And we held our planning board meeting on November the twentieth and after a lengthy discussion, they're, they voted unanimously to recommend denial of the application request and they've sent it on to the city council for the public hearing, which city council can come up with, you know, their approval or reschedule to another status. Page one, I mean, two and three is the application. Page four, I circled the property that was gonna be relocated, it's behind west, west of those houses on Blackrock School Road. And page five is just another, larger showing the rezoning around the property, showing the duty beans estate to the east is R fifteen. And those houses to the east of Blackrock School Road are R fifteen also. The white you see with those numbers, that's Gaston County, that's out of our ETJ, ETJ, and to the north, that's out of our ETJ. The darker color to the south is the Delhue community. And page six is just a plat of the proposed, what they would do with the property if it is rezoned. And that's pretty much it, I was requesting a public hearing date.
Okay, I know we're not making any decision tonight, but I do have one question, do we have any housing that is zoned under the requested zoning that they're asking for?
The two new developments.
Yeah.
Two new developments are.
So the Strat Crocker is.
And Ripway.
So, I know we're not, we're only gonna set the, this wouldn't be the time to ask that, but I'm sure that's gonna come up. If you bid one development, why aren't you okay on this one? And I would be anxious to know what planning and zoning problems was with issuing this, but that's either here or the now, neither here nor now, but right now, all you want us to do is set a date.
Yeah.
And, okay, so.
I have one question, mayor, is Mr. Heffner on the other side of Blackrock?
He's on.
Did he develop the other side of Blackrock, the existing development?
Piedmont has something that they.
Yeah, I believe they did.
I think they, I'm pretty sure he did.
Colony Builders is working with Piedmont on this new development.
So it's a different developer?
I don't know if that, who all was involved.
Well, I think, I think what, what Mr. Heffner's doing now is he's, he owns the land, he's developing the lots. Once the lots get, say, approved or whatever, then he's turning it over to Century Builders and a national builder is gonna build the, the homes.
And maybe to answer your question, council member, Hovis, if you go out there, they already, if you go down Blackrock School Road, they already have the roads that will go back, that will join this property. So they're already there, so I'm thinking maybe he already owned that or either he's asking for right-of-way to get to it.
Own the other property on the.
That's, I'm thinking maybe he did.
Okay.
Or either all of a sudden he got right-of-way privileges, but there's one, after you go in about the third house down on the left, and then there's one at the very end, before you get to the last house, the other road goes back there, but they already cut the roads into there. Okay, so, so really what I need is council's a motion to set the public hearing for January the eighth, two thousand twenty-four. Do I have a motion from council?
I make a motion to set a public hearing at our next regularly scheduled council meeting of January eighth, two thousand twenty-four.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to set a public hearing date for January the eighth, two thousand twenty-four, to discuss the rezoning.
Y'all have any questions between now and then, feel free to call me, email me, or stop by my office. I'll be happy to.
I'll be there, I will definitely be there.
Alright.
Okay. Thank you, Richard.
You're quite welcome.
Go ahead, council, I think we have.
No, we haven't.
You have the better.
No, if there's any other discussion.
You don't have to.
You don't, you have something else?
No.
Oh, okay.
I have one.
Okay, we have a motion and second to set the public hearing for January the eighth, two thousand twenty-four. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, it is unanimous. Okay, item fifteen is consideration of surplus equipment and chief Brandon Hunzucker, you'll go to page forty, oh, I missed it.
Forty-seven.
Forty-seven.
Yeah, I know, but I flipped through it, there it is. Finger's too fat for these, there we go.
Good evening, mayor.
Alright, chief, you have the floor.
Good evening, mayor, council. First of all, congratulations to the three of you for being sworn in tonight. Look forward to working with you in the future.
Thank you very much, Brandon.
The police department is requesting to surplus an item, it is a Glock Model nineteen handgun with three magazines. On your paperwork, you will see the serial number listed there, I'm not gonna throw that out for security reasons. This handgun is the issued handgun for Captain Mark Stapp. Mark Stapp will be retiring at the end of the month, his first day of retirement will be January one. His last day of work with us will be on the twenty-ninth of December. In the law enforcement, law enforcement profession, it is customary for the retiring officer to receive their handgun. In order to do that, we have to classify it, it's surplus, and then that weapon has to be purchased by officer Stapp. So my request is that we surplus this handgun, we sell the handgun to Captain Stapp for one dollar, and then the sale would be completed at the Great Outdoors here in Cherryville, they are a federal firearms license dealer, they have agreed to do the paperwork for us to make the transfer legal and clear. So that is my request, is that we surplus that weapon and those three magazines.
Okay, one question I have, and it may already be customary, but does he receive his badge also?
He will also receive his badge and I did not put that in there. I was actually gonna hold off and come back to the next one, but if you want to go ahead and surplus that too, it'd be phenomenal.
Well, I just knew that was customary. I've given one away before and it was the badge and the gun.
Yeah, it is a, and it's a gold captain's badge. Matter of fact, we've already purchased the new one to replace that one, one his is retired out of the family. So if you wanna add that in, I would be most gracious of that too.
Alright, any questions for chief Hunzucker? If not, I have a motion that we add that in and at the same time, award the surplus equipment to be awarded.
I make a motion we surplus the Glock handgun and add in the captain's badge and we can surplus both those so that Captain Stapp can have those for his retirement.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to, with the amendment that we include the badge along with the, with the handgun. So any other discussion? If not, all in favor of this motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the same. And there is none. Okay, thank you, chief. We'll move to item sixteen, consideration of architecture review board nominations and we have our downtown Main Street director, David Day, with us and that's page.
Forty-eight.
Forty-eight.
Okay. David, you have the floor.
City council, thank you. As part of the bylaws and of the ARB out in two thousand twenty-one, we created new bylaws, which put a rotating basis on many of the members so everybody didn't go off. Scott Bean, Tim Moss, and Stan Baumgartner have agreed to continue serving another period of, of two years and so they are up for nomination, as presented by the Main Street program and Donna, Donna and myself to you guys. And then still current would be Doug Blackburn, Vicky Spurling, and Beth von Berg, and they're nomin, they would be up for a election next year. But we are asking that Scott Bean, Tim Moss, and Stan Baumgartner continue as representatives of the architectural review board.
Okay, I have any questions from council to the Main Street director, David Day, in regards to the nominations?
I'm sorry, they just need, as needed.
We normally meet the last Thursday of every month if we have grants to look at, but if we don't have any to look at, we don't meet. And if we have grants to approve, we do meet for them, so it's basically, we're supposed to meet at, we can meet the third, fourth Monday of every, thir, excuse me, fourth Thursday of every month, but a lot of times we don't have grants or approvals or anything to meet.
The money gets used up pretty quick, doesn't it, sometimes?
Usually about April, maybe the end of the year. Our, this year, we have already used our ten thousand dollars in winter grants for this year, so there will be no winter grants available till the next budget year. And right now, we still haven't given out a lot of our seventy-five, I think, of the money for regular grants for front, sides, rear roof and.
The side.
This is just for Main Street?
Yes, ma'am, our central business district.
Just for the central business district?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, I have a motion from the council to accept the architectural review board nominations from downtown director, David Day, for coming year for twenty-four through twenty-six.
I make a motion that we renominate Scott Bean, Tim Moss, and Stan Baumgartner for the next two years. I'll second it.
I have a motion and a second to accept the architectural review board nominations of Scott Bean, Tim Moss, and Stan Baumgartner for years twenty twenty-four through twenty twenty-six. All in favor of this motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the same. There is none, unanimous. Okay, thank you, David. Okay, next item eighteen is consideration of proposed cemetery rates and we have our city clerk, page green, that's gonna be pages forty-nine through fifty-two in your packets. So you have the floor now.
Mayor and council, as you know, each year our contractor for our cemetery for the opening and closing of graves, Richard Green, Green and Sons, they usually go up five or ten dollars on each of the items that you see listed there in your packet. I want you to know that the, I did get the price list from him, November the sixth, and he will be going up ten dollars on cremation graves, five dollars on baby graves, ten dollars on adult graves, ten on oversized adult graves, and then the tent's not anything we worry about, that is actually with the funeral homes, but he sends the funeral homes the same copy. In the past, council's always decided to go up exactly what he was proposing, or you can decide to go up, say, fifty dollars and then us not have an increase for a couple years. Of course, the decision is yours, it's just something to think about. It would make keeping up with the cost of these different items a lot easier if it was like a rounded number, instead of two eighty-five being three hundred dollars.
So... It's not a lot of money, and my opinion, I like to keep it as low as possible.
Keep it at this.
Where I departed, but it's not up to me, it's up to council, and if they have any questions for cemetery rates, our city clerk, Page Green, will answer those.
How many years have they gone up?
Every year.
Every year.
Every year.
Every year.
Well, I've been on here for ten years.
Since she's been, since she were here. He usually goes up, he usually goes up five or ten dollars, and he always says, you know, it's the cost of fuel and different things that go up for him. And I understand that, and, I mean, we can decide to leave it as it is, or we can go up, or we can bump it up even higher, so we don't have to do it again next year.
I do, too. I think it's more than ten.
It's never, I've never seen more than ten dollars on one of those items, ever.
I think we should just go up the amount that he's going up and not, not increase it anymore.
And his rate is effective January one, and so that ours would be too. That's why we do it at the December meeting.
Page, the two eighty that you have for cremation, that is going to be our new rate?
No, you would add ten dollars. No, I apologize, it would be two eighty. I'm sorry, it would be two eighty.
You're just showing one.
Just showing that what he went up, yes. Yes.
How am I reading this, and on page, page fifty?
Forty-nine.
On page fifty, you got cremation grave opening, three ninety-five to four oh five?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, if you look at page fifty in red to the side where, for the fees for grave opening and closing, what is in red is what our new fee would be if you adopt the amount that he is proposing to go up.
Okay. Councilman Hovis, would you like to put that in the form of a motion to accept the proposed cemetery rates as presented?
I will make that as a motion. Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second to accept the proposed cemetery rates as presented by our city clerk, Page Green. All in favor of the motion, please say aye. We'll move on to item eighteen, and this is consideration of a budget amendment, page fifty-three, and City Manager Brian Dalton, this is just some bookwork.
Yes, Mayor and Council, these are always the type of budget amendments you like. This is donations. If you remember Mr. Stratt speaking at the first of the meeting, the Cherry Tree Project, that sixteen thousand five hundred is from that donation for the cherry tree, and the five hundred thousand dollar donation is the second installment from the community development agreement with Piedmont Lithium.
So that makes a total of one million?
Yes, for that agreement with Piedmont Lithium.
Okay. And this is just bookwork to keep Dixie on line with all the new money that's come in, so that she shows where it's going. Okay, any questions by council for City Manager or Finance Director Dixie Waugh?
Yes, Brian, I have a question on the five hundred thousand.
Yes, ma'am.
How much of that's already been spent?
Well, none of it's actually been, well, let me back up. It's not actually been spent completely yet, but that five hundred thousand is what's going to be used to build the splash pad. We have ordered material, which was about eighty-five thousand dollars, I think. The splash pad in total is going to be three hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars to build. So that's three hundred and forty-eight of that five hundred, and then the rest of it is going to be used to fund our new Recreation Director for the next two years, the salary.
And we might add that Councilman Hovis, that money is restricted to recreation, so that's...
It was.
Yes. When they donated, it was specified that it go for recreation.
Right.
To recreation.
Okay. What's the council's pleasure on the budget amendment as being accepted?
Make a motion we accept the budget amendment as stated.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion in a second to accept the budget amendment as presented. All in favor of this motion, please say aye. All opposed, the same? And there is none. Okay, we'll move on. Item nineteen, and I will stress on this, it's under other business, and I'll go ahead and put out what we have on other business that is relevant to our citizens. We've had so much questions, rumors, falsehoods, lies, whatever you want to call it, about the historical museum, and I want to read what this was prepared by City Council to present to you, considering the historical museum, to try to clarify where the position is for the city and for the museum. The City of Cherryville would like to try and explain the situation of the historical museum to the community. This has been a compli- complicated, excuse me, complicated process with a lot of rumors that have not been accurate information. It is true that the City of Cherryville was actively looking to recruit a nice restaurant for our downtown. A restaurant would complement the beautification project and would benefit our downtown businesses. It would give our citizens a fine dining option in Cherryville. There was interest from a local, highly successful restaurant. Accordingly, council made the decision to offer the building up for the public bid process. We received bids from Citizens and Cherryville Main Street LLC. Cherryville Main Street LLC ultimately being the highest in winning bidder. It is our understanding that although it was not required to do so, Cherryville Main Street LLC was going to improve and maintain the museum in its current location. This was primarily because Cherryville Main Street LLC had purchased other buildings to support this restaurant in question. The museum then had the opportunity to remain in its current location. Subsequently, a lawsuit was filed by Al Putnam, the president of the Cherryville Historical Association. After multiple court continuances by Mr. Putnam, he voluntarily dismissed the lawsuit without prejudice. And I emphasize, without prejudice, which means that the lawsuit can be refiled. Cherryville Main Street LLC elected at this time to terminate its bid because the lawsuit created a cloud on insurance and title, and the city could not convey marketable title. The city could not perform its obligations to Cherryville Main Street LLC due to the lawsuit. Therefore, the city accepted Cherryville Main Street LLC's request to terminate. Since these events, all board members of the Cherryville Historical Association have resigned, with the exception of Al Putnam, President, and Lori Pruitt. During this course of time, the city sent the museum a notification that it would not renew its lease with the museum for the year two thousand twenty-four. The city was required to send this notification during its period of anticipated sale because a condition of the lease was that it owns the building. So the city had to give the museum notice. At this time, the city still has no intention of renewing the lease until it is able to appoint and work with a new board. As previously noted, as a reason for the sale, the building is in need of repairs, and it's not being used to its highest and best potential for our citizens. The city encourages all artifacts to remain in the historical museum, and a new board will be appointed by the City Council in two thousand twenty-four. The city wants to be very clear that though the city desires to keep the museum in its current building located at one oh nine East Main Street, and the city will have a positive, positive relationship with a newly appointed board. Once the new board is appointed, a new lease will be initiated with the newly appointed board of the Historical Association. So in termizing this, let me just say this, there is one individual that's prohibiting that museum from staying in its current location with all the artifacts that are within that building, and I would suggest that anytime you see this one individual that's holding everything up, that you please, as citizens of Cherryville, tell them that it's time to step down and appoint a new board. And that is where the city stands on this situation at this time. Now, I will open it up to any citizen that would like to be heard concerning what I have just read. Come to the podium, state your name and address.
Rusty Wise, Four Johnson Drive. I know Boosie's not here, Mr. Delinger's not here, he's not feeling well, but he has been in negotiations with Mr. Dalton and Al, and it's my understanding that Al was willing to drop everything if he could get something in writing that the museum would stay there. And the city did produce a ten-year utilities contract that the city would give utilities for ten years and also paid up to five hundred dollars per month on the lease. But it's my understanding that the negotiations between Mr. Delinger and Mr. Dalton is no one will ever put in writing that it's going to stay the museum. Now, you said that, Mayor, but Cherryville Main Street LLC never would put it in writing that they were actually going to keep it a museum. They never would say what they were going to do. So it's my understanding that if Cherryville Main Street LLC would have said, yeah, we're keeping it a museum, this would have been over with months ago. But nobody would ever put it in writing. It's my understanding that the museum wanted a ten-year lease, but they said, no, we're not going to do a lease. So is the city going to out, what's the lease going to be? Is it going to be a day, a year, or what's it going to be?
We are not going to negotiate with Al Putnam at all, and none of that will be done until a new board has been appointed.
Okay. And we do stand firm on that.
If Al chooses to take everything and move it out of the building, that's on him a hundred percent. We're saying it can stay, but the board has to go. And that's very clear, that's our stance.
And I would, I would tell you this, Mr. Wise, we have deep concerns over the leadership, and we look at it this way, that leadership has lost every single member that was on that board with the exception of one. So every, all these members have seen, they don't like the way that the museum's headed. So they pulled out. I know Linda Barger, Alice Stellinger, Anita Millwood, I can keep naming all of them, Amy Doster, just Greg Pacer, all these people have resigned. Does that not tell the current leadership they don't like the way the leadership is in the direction they're sending them? And, but the city is firm, we're not going to renew that lease with current leadership, that's it, period.
Okay. Well, I just know that negotiations between, you know, Mr. Dalton and Mr. Delinger and Al, that everything was going to be dropped if a lease was produced, but no one would ever produce a lease.
Yeah. But let me explain this, they don't need to be making demands to us, we need to be making demands to them. We own the building. We give them free utilities. We repair the building, to the extent we spent some forty-eight thousand dollars in the last year, this current year, on that building. So, you know, we definitely want to see it there. We never had intentions that we didn't want it there. Our problem is with the leadership.
Yeah, I'm not here to take either side.
I'm sure.
Really not. I just thought, you know, no one will ever put in writing that it's going to stay in the museum.
But Mr. Wise, I have to say, that statement he just read is, you can consider that in writing, we choose to leave the museum there at one oh nine East Main Street, period.
But how long did that?
We own, we own the building. That is our decision.
It was almost a restaurant, until the owner said he's not putting a restaurant in there.
But that's what I'm saying, is your negotiations now are really with the City of Cherryville. The current board needs to be, the current board, we need a new board, and we're going to issue a new lease. City Council will choose a board, issue a new lease, and we move on. And that's why we encourage all artifacts to stay, and we encourage the museum to stay right there at one oh nine East Main Street, period.
Or you're going to keep the same association?
I think that would be a good thing, I do. I know, I do think the new bylaws that were presented to the City Council, I guess about a year, year and a half ago now.
From a former member?
Yeah, from the charter member.
Charter member.
Those new bylaws probably need to be looked at as being adopted, but I think that is the best scenario for all citizens of the City of Cherryville.
Well, I know some of the families have contacted me, some are concerned, you know, some are on loan, some were given, and it's just, don't really know what the intent of the artifacts are, you know, on January first.
Yeah, and that's why our stance is, if they'll just leave the artifacts, the museum's going to stay there, and the museum's going to continue to operate, and it's going to get better. That's the goal. The goal is to get a new, new board in there and to move forward with the museum being exactly where it is.
There's a cloud over that leadership now anyway, because he became president, really, in the illegal meeting. He didn't even tell the current president, and he was having a meeting that night, and they voted her out.
Yeah, I don't, I don't...
I have a question, if Mr. Putnam removes artifacts, would he be liable? I mean, what would the, yeah, it's, would there be?
It depends on what the bylaws say, for one, if they're on lease, if they're on loan, or if they are owned by the museum, and what the relationship is with the board and the city as to who owns those artifacts. But if he took things that belong to the city or any citizen that are not his, then by definition, that would be a taking, that could be potentially punishable by imprisonment or otherwise.
I can add this to make it simple. How it all started is, City Manager, myself, and Councilmember Parker, who was the liaison to the museum, went to their meeting in a friendly manner and told them that we wanted input into the leadership for one reason. We understood from the current president that they couldn't have a meeting for everybody hollering and not respecting Robert's rules or anything else, so we told them, and we were immediately attacked, our members, saying, well, you're here to take us over. But let me tell you, we said, we'll do it diplomatically. But let me tell you, we said, we'll do it diplomatically, just like we do the ABC board. You come to city hall, go to city clerk, get an application, tell us you want to be on the board at the museum. We will look at the applications and choose however many that would represent the city. The ABC board gives us an audit every year, tells us every penny they take in, every penny they spend. They give us free reins to their meeting minutes and everything. The museum has never, as long as I've been mayor of the city, has never given us an audit report, has never given us a financial report, has never told us what is going on with the hundreds of thousands of dollars that has been donated to them that the city has no control over. It was donated to them, but yet they've not told us how it's being spent. Is it being spent on legal matters to sue the city? We don't know because we've never seen a report from them. But that's what I would comment, and I'm done with this. And let some council members have anything they want to say.
I'd like to speak.
But thank you, Mr. Wise.
So I'd like to speak, Mr. W.
Come to the podium, please. State your name.
So I'll just make a few comments. I'm Sid Strapp. I live at two oh seven West Academy Street. I joined the board in January, I believe, of twenty twenty-two. And within six months, I was the, in that year, I think I was the second person to resign from the board directors there. As has been spoken before, the meetings were not meetings that I never, I've served on other boards of five oh one, three C, non-profit corporations, and I've never witnessed anything that I liked that went on there. Now, look, I realize it's a small town, so, you know, we were trying to get along. But I'll just say this, you know, to Rusty's point, look, what the Main Street LLC, their involvement is done. It doesn't matter at this point what the Main Street LLC promised or didn't promise. You know, we're now at a point that the city, they still own the building. We need to move forward, folks. This has been going on too long. And I understand, this should be operated, I think, just like we do with the General Theatre, you know, other groups in town. There's nothing wrong with having the city appoint, looking at resumes, you know, who really wants to be involved? What's in their, you know, are they really interested in history and preserving this? I think it's a great thing that we moved that direction, and that's one reason why I was sort of forced out, because I was on that side. It's, I don't want to go into disparaging other people, but, you know, we need a fresh slate. By the way, Mr. Putnam, I am not looking to join the new board. I think in some times that that's what started this whole thing, is that he was so irate with me and my asking questions that it was just, it was to go to, there were no limits that he would go to to try to keep this thing in turmoil and move forward. However, again, it's over, that's all done, it's in the past. I support the council's direction to move this thing forward and that. And I do ask people, please talk to Mr. Putnam, please talk to Ms. Lori Pruitt. Lori Pruitt is the other single remaining member. Here's my last point. I reviewed those bylaws when I joined the board, because having been served on these before, I said, that's the first thing, you know, where are the bylaws? Well, they're back in a cabinet somewhere in the body. I said, how do we know we're running this thing correctly if we don't know what we're bound legally to do as a five oh one C three, non-profit corporation? We finally got that out, and I will say this, one of the downfalls of those bylaws, and who would have thought this, it can continue to operate. I believe with this, as few as one person on the board, whoever wrote them never thought that something like this would come about where you would have a mass accidents and you were left with two people. So my appeal is to Mr. Putnam and Ms. Pruitt to do the right thing for this town. You know, there's been enough bad blood and bad, you know, name-calling, all this stuff. Let's move forward. You know, Cherryville's got so much going right now, and this museum could be a top draw, I'm telling you, for out-of-town business. Got to get moving, folks. So thank you, council. That's my.
Okay, anyone else like to be heard concerning this matter? Here's your chance. Okay, if not, I would ask for any other business from council that they would like to bring up at this time?
I'd like to bring up, I've watched a couple of the county commissioners' meetings recently. I've talked to several county commissioners. Their citizens-to-herd is limited to three minutes, and it's always been plenty of time. I don't know why we give five minutes. Even the gentleman that spoke earlier did not use the entire five. So I would like to maybe have us, you know, discuss changing that to three minutes instead of five. I think three minutes is a lot of time to get your point across. If you get up here and you tell your point, and you don't beat around the bush, or you don't chew us out for five minutes. So I'd like to see us change that from five to three. Like I said, the county does, I know other towns only give three. I don't know why we ever gave five, but.
I know other organizations, I mean, too, it's only three minutes.
Yeah, I think it's clear.
They only allow three minutes to state what you want to talk about.
Okay. Do you want to put that on January the eighth council meeting?
Yeah, I mean, I think we should discuss it at the work session and then vote on it on January eighth. That's okay with everybody. Put it on our agenda for the work session.
Okay. So this is just direction for
Yeah, yeah.
our city clerk, city manager. Okay. I have any other business from city staff?
Let me say.
Oh, okay. Maybe I'll just report on the, maybe we're going to do that anyway, on the recreation director position.
Yes, we've received five applications, I believe, for the recreation director position. I'm going to start interviewing, this week is the first interview on Wednesday. And I have another individual that is coming home from college for break, and I'm going to try to interview him when he's home on his break, and then I'm going to try to interview some of the other candidates, probably start of the first of the year.
Any progress on getting the screen up at Edwards Park?
Not yet. But we will get it, I promise.
No, I keep asking you.
I promise, we'll get it. I promise. I will say, I know the mayor mentioned it earlier, the fence did get installed today at Westgate around the basketball court. It is a.
Because I was back there a couple days ago, wasn't I?
So the fence is around the basketball and the pickleball at this time. Yep, they finished it today. So what I'm going to try to do is get Chief Walfer to get his guys to go out there and wash the road down, the court down, clean it up, and hopefully we can have a reopening of Westgate here in the near future.
You might want to mention, too, that we did plant new grass.
We have planted new grass, straw.
Straw down to keep the mud from.
Yeah, hopefully it takes root soon.
One other thing, I told my neighbor, I bring up, was Chief still here? We had a complaint about speed on East Academy Street. I just talked to him, but.
It's gone approximately three weeks. We got some really good feedback. I think it's a comment that the mayor made last meeting. There were very few speeders out of thousands of cars. Out of those thousands, I could give you true numbers. I don't have that actually with me, but I can share that with you. Mr. Abernathy asked me earlier about moving the signs to the east side, and we will try to get that done this week.
Okay, thank you. Totally my asking.
Okay, nothing else from council?
One other thing I was going to need y'all to look at is city offices will be closed December twenty-fifth, twenty-sixth, and twenty-seventh for Christmas. And obviously, the twenty-sixth is what our scheduled work session would be to see about possibly rescheduling our work session to the twenty-eighth, maybe.
Is everybody going to be here on the?
Twenty-eighth.
Twenty-eighth will be a Thursday?
That would be a Thursday, yes.
I got no problem.
Well, I thought I might, but I'll just be here.
Now, we'll do this at five thirty.
Yes.
So we'll, should be out of there apparently.
So you need the motion to do that?
Yes, we'd need a motion.
I'll make a motion to change our December work session to Thursday, the twenty-eighth, at five thirty, here in council chambers.
I have a second. Okay, have a motion and a second to reschedule the normal work session for December to December twenty-eighth. Any other discussion? If not, all in favor of the motion, say aye. All opposed, the same. There is none. Okay.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I have a second.
Okay, have a motion for adjournment and a second. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, the same.